This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
All right, let's get going. We'll see who shows up. We have at least a quorum for Select Board. We know that eventually Joy and John will show up and unfortunately Finance will have to figure this out, I guess, because I'm not sure what we can do. All right, so we have Randall up first. And actually, as we get into this, I would just like to, on behalf, I think of everybody, just to say thanks to you and your team for this incredible work effort over this ridiculous snowstorm that nobody was really predicting would be quite as bad as it was. So thanks for everybody's time and effort and extra effort doing way beyond, I'm sure, what their normal duties are, even in a snowstorm, so.
Thanks for recognizing it was a tough one, but it's not out of the ordinary of what we might expect, so.
Well, when they said two to three, two to three inches, it's a little bit different.
Right.
A little bit more than that, for sure. All right, so the purpose tonight, we're not going to go through the entire budget overview. We have a spreadsheet from Bradley that put that together about a week ago, maybe almost a week ago. But what I wanted to do tonight, the intent was to have a joint meeting with Finance, which we won't have, but we will have our meeting at least to go through both the Highway and the Police Department budgets. We want to try and take the bigger departments first and have that discussion in a bit more depth as a prelude to what we're getting into for the budget season. So Randall, with that, we'll just turn it over to you and you've got control of the mouse and whatever you'd like to share with us, I guess, okay?
Sure. So Randall Kemp, Highway Superintendent, this is basically one of the sheets I use to track expenditures per year. I try to categorize the big-ticket items in order to give you and the public an understanding of where all the money goes. And then it also establishes trends for my requests for the next fiscal year. I don't know how in-depth you want me to get with this, but, you know, I put notes over here on the side of how I came to the request number, and it's like a five-year
I'm afraid she doesn't have the notes, so.
Okay. It can be a five-year average of data, like, for instance, the first thing in building expenses, electricity, looks like it's going to be a pretty volatile expense with electric rates going up this year. But I just took a five-year average of what we've been paying, and that was my request, because I can't add on unknown percentage increases.
You could make that maybe just a little bit bigger.
Let me see if I can do that. I might lose some.
Eddie, are you recommending?
You could hide a couple of the early columns, though.
Okay, hide a couple of years.
Like 14 to 18, we may not need necessarily, or 14 to 17.
Are you making a recommendation in terms of various departments for electricity, like Library, Police, Highway?
I actually would, because I would look at this as actually a contractual increase. And yes, it's going to be this year and what everything appears for next year. Going to be a sizable jump over what those rates were in fiscal year 2022.
We don't have a percentage in mind yet in terms of how to calculate that?
No, I'm still trying to go through everyone's usage this year and trying to compare it to the year before and trying to figure really where the average is going to actually fall out.
Yep.
Which can be tough, too, because for heating and cooling, it's going to depend a lot on the outside temperature of how high we go in any one particular year.
Right.
So it adds another fun variable to try and.
And actually, in addition to the rate increases we're seeing, you know, for example, Eversource put in and has been accepted for a delivery rate increase, too, rather than just the usage rate increase.
Right. All right, so for electricity, you've got an average there at $3,300, right?
Yep. And I did similar things on a lot of these categories. So do you want me to just go through them slowly? I don't think we need to talk about each line, or is that your pleasure?
Maybe the bigger lines, I mean, you know, I don't think you have to go line by line by lines.
Yeah, so I guess in building expenses, one of the bigger ones is heating oil and propane, heating fuel and propane. That was a five-year average, again, because it can be pretty variable with the commodity cost and how warm or cool it is in a particular year. Obviously, the cooler it is, the more heating oil you use, so.
But you've taken an average there, right, if I'm seeing this right?
I have.
Eighty-eight hundred, but for fiscal '23, since we haven't even really finished the winter season, I'm assuming you haven't been billed for everything that you were
No, we haven't.
Spent, so.
Yeah, so for FY '23, I put in what my request was. The five-year average would be FY '22 and back five years. So there is a little data gap there, but I also realize, you know, there are limitations to the budget, so I'm trying to make a realistic ask.
Exactly, yeah. I think one of the things we talked about, and this will be for a future meeting, but we had talked about having in the spreadsheet, having the actual expenses as well, a column for actual expenses, not just the budgeted amounts, so we can see how much has actually been spent against what was planned for.
Yeah, actually, so in my previous years, FY '22 and back, it is, oh, I forgot, this is a touchscreen, that is actual. The one in green for FY '23 is the request.
Yep, got it.
Are you saying FY '23, you'd like to see what is spent so far, or?
No, I was just making a general statement that of a big budget spreadsheet that we've got that compiled all the departments, I don't believe there was an actual expenditure column in there, the one I saw, anyway, but that's something that we had talked about at the last meeting, that as we go through budget discussions, that will help us sort of get a better peg on things, too. So no, not particularly to you.
And yes, they know.
Bradley had actually at least added the fiscal year '22 column and was looking to add the previous year's actual to that.
So we'll, you know, once we get around to kind of looking at the overall budget again, that'll be helpful, but tonight's just focusing on Highway, and then we'll go into Police, so.
Just so you know, if you look underneath the categories here, do you see the gray numbers here? That is what I was appropriated, and this is what was actually spent.
Okay.
And so anybody with an astute eye will look at some of those and say, well, if you've overspent on a lot of these accounts, how does that add up? And I think you all know by now, we've been making up for our deficiencies using unspent money in wages, which is unsustainable.
Yep.
So you pretty much overspent.
Question, please?
No, I'm just.
So that was the big ones in building expenses, and then we go down.
Question about building expenses? You have a new generator, right?
We do.
So are there any expenses built into the maintenance for that?
No.
What will that look like?
That's a great question, Rainey. We should get a maintenance contract. I wonder if there's any economy of scale in getting.
There has been.
There has been, okay.
I will send you someone.
Okay, very good. Okay.
So the total line, total for building is, building expenses is $25,388.78, right?
Twenty, no, that was the '23 ask. It's the FY '24 category.
$25,388.31.
Yes.
Is the fiscal '24 request?
Yeah, I'm looking at it right here.
Yep. Okay.
All right, so we'll move down to highway building, general highway expenses, and this is actual money that goes into the roads and infrastructure, and then everything else to, like, run the department that doesn't go in one of the other categories, such as machinery maintenance or winter roads. So the big ones here, obviously, are the commodities, pavement, asphalt, line painting. Where's some of the other bigger ones? Catch basin repair is a big one. Gravel and stone for repairing dirt roads, that's another big ticket. Gasoline and diesel fuel cost, that's a big one. And then there are a lot of smaller ones that I've tried to tease out of the budget, just so you know how much we spend on all of those things.
So that going up from 19 to 30, was that what, you know, the discussion that was going around about the accountability to each department? I mean, that's a pretty big increase to $10,000.
For fuel, fuel and.
Or fuel? My fuel was?
Now it's up to 30, it was 19. Is that because of the issue with not applying it to various departments?
No, it's not. That is just based on, what did I base that on? I left notes of most of these.
It went under the street sweeping one?
Yeah, right there.
Right there, yep.
It went from 19.7 to 30. That's projected because we're not through yet, or, no, that
No, the 30 was, 30 was basically what I built into my ask for last year.
Okay.
And if you can see, my ask was 189, 125, and I was appropriated 148. So the estimate of use, the complicated thing with gasoline and diesel is that I have a line for it in general highway, but I also keep a line for winter roads of, for gasoline and diesel, in case we have a particularly bad winter. I think that should be accounted for there. And then for gasoline and diesel, if you scroll all the way down, or I'll scroll all the way down to the bottom, that is the sum of gasoline and diesel for each year, so it'll give you an idea where we go from year to year, if that makes sense. This is a sum of, this bottom line here is a sum of each one of the general highway and winter roads where we use diesel for actual expenditures.
Are you limited to the amount that you can put under winter roads of gas, diesel, or anything else because of the only place you can really deficit spend? Are you limited in some ways?
I mean, that's a, it depends. If we have an emergency and overspend, it has to come from somewhere to make up for it.
Right, but I'm just saying I can see how there might be an ability to have more wiggle room.
We are limited to, and this is in total,
Yeah.
not decreasing the total of winter roads expenses, wages and expenses. On the other side, it's strictly what the Select Board is willing to, what the department head is willing to request, and the Select Board is willing to pass along in the budget to town meeting.
In terms of how we divide that out, between Highway and Winter Roads, you mean?
Just, I mean, that's just diesel.
You mean, winter roads, is it, how much we want to?
I can go down to winter roads. Are there any questions about general highway?
No, I mean, let's take a look at the general highway.
I have one question.
Sure.
So where are we with the current contract with Franklin Regional, another group buying? Did we just sign that this year?
You signed it, and the quantity. It's.
Or is it annual?
It's annual.
Okay. And that's definitely paying off, right?
I believe we get a good price. I know Ed had sent me the state price for salt last year, and Franklin Cog got a better price than the state did.
Okay.
So, I mean, that's only one example, but it's one that I, you know, looked at pretty carefully and was pleased that we bid under Franklin Cog.
And that's the one that's in your budget here at the $300?
Yes.
Is that it?
Three.
Is that all we pay for a contract?
The membership for Franklin.
The membership, yeah.
Franklin Cog is $3,000.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I thought it was more.
Oops, I got my finger on the wrong one, I'm sorry.
I thought that sounded like.
Sorry about that. That was me.
It's 3,000.
3,000 a year, yeah. That's the contract, okay.
And that involves gravel, sand?
Most of the big commodity things, asphalt, line painting, other pavement preservation techniques like chip seal, cape seal, crack sealing, gravel, winter sand, winter salt, catch basin cleaning services, there's a lot under it. I just did the yearly estimates for the coming fiscal.
So it's definitely, we're saving more than 3,000.
So we need to comply with procurement in order to use Chapter 90 money on any of the projects that I'm bidding out for. I have to name them specifically in the bid. The only alternative would be to bid it all out ourselves, and I just don't, I think that's a bigger job than Ed or I have time to perform.
So basically, it's worth it?
I believe so, yes.
So when you have a budget, I'm going to show my lack of understanding here, when you have a budget for the pavement, the first two there, the 40 and the 30,000 on asphalt and chip sealing and all that stuff?
Yes.
How does that tie back into your Chapter 90 money? I mean, it's in your budget here, and we get Chapter 90 money, and how does that all flow?
If you remember from my budget narrative, we had a pavement management report done by Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, and they suggested in the report that we should be spending $450,000 per year putting into our roads in order to maintain the level we have now. And so the, we get $314,000 from Chapter 90, and then we supplement it with the general highway. But if you look at the general highway and subtract all of the things that aren't actually going into the roads, we're underfunding it every year.
Sure.
And so that's why I, we had a wish list item on the budget, and I put in an extra, I believe it was, $50,000 for, just to try and get us toward what we should be putting into the roads.
So, yeah, so basically, this budget supplements what we get from Chapter 90, isn't it?
Absolutely. Chapter 90 is not meant to do it all on its own.
Yeah, that was my question. I knew that we weren't getting all that we should be, and maybe there'll be some increases there someday when somebody figures that out, but, yeah, okay. Nancy, any questions? No, okay.
Want me to scroll down from general and go to machinery maintenance?
Sure.
So this is one that's been tough to manage in the past. If you look at what we were allotted in the gray below, down here, and compare it to what the ask was, or the actual spent, you'll see that we were kind of consistently overspending.
Hard to read those figures.
Yeah, I don't know what I can do to make them better. Yeah, we, for a long time, we were capped at 70,610. Last year, the Finance Committee and the Select Board approved an increase of that account up to 98,000. And we are, I'm gonna knock on wood, doing well with that. So my ask is actually $2,000 less this year, because I think we're going to come in under budget on that line item. The new equipment that we've been replacing is certainly helping us, because newer equipment costs less to maintain.
And didn't you have a huge truck repair possibility because something went out of service within the last two, three months? There was something?
We do, we have a truck that's out of service, and I have two estimates for the repair. Neither one of them seem like there's a benefit to getting the truck repaired, because it wouldn't be worth that much more. Comparable trucks of that age are worth only a little more than the actual price of the fix.
So if you were to dispose of it and take it off the rolls, do we get any trade-in value toward a new vehicle, or?
That is yet to be determined.
But is it something you think we should take off the rolls, maybe, or not yet? You're gonna try and still make it work, or?
I'm still, we're still trying to work out what we're gonna do with it, whether we're gonna repair, appropriate money for a replacement, or something else.
So the cost of that repair is not really maybe figured into your $80,000 line, is it? Probably not?
I mean, not specifically, no.
Yeah, okay.
But from year to year, you can imagine that there are unanticipated mechanical breakdowns that I can't possibly predict what they're gonna be, so.
At one point, didn't you do some kind of a, you know, equipment replacement plan?
I have produced equipment replacement plans under request of the town administrator. I think we do them every year for capital improvement and update them frequently.
Okay, and how close are we to that?
We're, can I be optimistic and say we're making progress, but we're still behind?
All right, yeah. And do you currently have a mechanic?
We do not.
Yeah, so.
Any questions on machinery maintenance expenses?
No, if you want to go to winter roads expenses, maybe, or?
Oh, actually, before I move on, just something I want to point out, just so, to inform you in the public. My two foremen, who have been instrumental in keeping stuff back up and running, they've been working as our mechanic in addition to their other duties. They have started an undercoating program on our vehicles, and that, what that does is it protects the car from, or the vehicle from snow and salt, and in order to make them last longer. So I just wanted to point out that we're doing what we can to try and make our equipment last longer.
Doesn't it come with that?
Well, it's something you have to reapply. It's kind of a coating, and it wears off and has to be reapplied.
Yep.
And so that line item, I've broken out the undercoating in machinery maintenance, too.
Got it, okay.
So winter roads, here again, it's highly variable based on how many storms we have. I think there are trends, though, of what it costs for a normal winter. I don't know why that comes, keeps coming up. The public also, over time, seems to demand clear roads almost immediately. We had 21 calls the day before yesterday wondering why the roads weren't plowed, even though we were out plowing since 3:00 a.m. So it's a challenge to try and keep up with public expectations with the resources we have.
Just as an aside, without going into great detail, but when you have a storm like we had the other night, I'm assuming you hit the main roads first, and you've got a list of, here's the main roads, here's the, what, the most traveled secondary roads, or, I mean, you've got a, you've got a.
You work your way out from the main roads to try to, to try and get back. And so you have a little bit of how I try to approach these things. I try to strategize in order to, I can't send my guys out to plow for 24 hours. It's infeasible and it's unsafe.
Yeah.
So you have to pick these punctuated times to try and clear the roads. I try to do it during morning and evening commute, if possible, because that's when the most people are gonna be on the roads. If school's in session, you go going a little earlier because you're gonna have buses on the road, too. And then you try and keep the mains open, number one, and work your way back. This storm that we just had, the snow came down so heavy that we plowed the mains multiple times before we could get to the secondary roads. It was just heavy, wet snow, and the guys and I plowed continuously. Just, you'd get done with the mains in your section, you'd go back and start the first ones again.
Plus, there were so many trees down, I mean.
Yeah, that was a challenge to work around, too. Yep.
Trees and lines down as well, yeah.
Not a great storm, but we got through it.
Okay.
Any questions about winter roads? Again, the salt and additives, sand, those are items that are bid out through Franklin Cog to try and get the best price for them.
And again, with your average in previous years, right, was, or is budget appropriated at 122,000, and then it's obviously gone up over the last two, three years, that there's been some of.
Right, so this is, if you remember, the winter roads expenses and wages are to, actually, I think we did increase the wages last year, but the expenses are that account that we can overspend if there's a winter emergency, and so it has historically been kept capped at 122,000. As you can see, with what we actually spent, we outspend it every of the last five years, and we're looking like we're going to be very close, if not exceed it, this year.
Well, the other side of that argument is the reason why you don't increase it is because you can never take a dollar away from it once you do. So while there's probably room to go up, you don't want to go all the way up to the top, because in a year that you decrease it, you're not allowed to deficit spend.
And that's valid, but I think at the same time, if the cost of materials keeps rising and you're not, and you're not keeping up with it, then you're creating a gap that has to be made up for in the budget somewhere. And so you either take it off from, I mean, we rob Peter to pay Paul all the time in this budget, and you're either taking it out of general highways, you're taking it directly out of your infrastructure, or you're taking it from somewhere else in the budget. It's a challenging position, I agree.
No, I don't disagree, but what would you say your five-year average is, or am I missing?
I can tell you exactly what my five-year average is of the data I've got. The average
Under?
Under winter roads expenses.
Winter road expenses?
Right. So your average is 155?
Yeah, or 155.8, yeah.
Yep.
And you got under 80.
Almost 156.
No, they get 122. You can't read that little gray number in there.
So the cap of the 122, that's decided by?
You all, yes. And basically, it's because the Department of Revenue has that contingency for, for winter emergencies, like John said, that you can appropriate to deficit spend, but you still have to make up for that somewhere in your budget.
Right, so the counterargument to your point where you're saying, if we don't go all the way up, so let's just say, so 122, and you say you want 50, so about 30,000?
Sure.
Right, because that 120, if I can read it, it's 122,000 that was appropriated?
122,100.
Right, and the average is roughly 155?
Yes.
So 33,000.
Sure.
Right, the difference there. So with us not putting that 33,000 in your budget means you gotta go find it up somewhere else on the line.
Right, in that line item, yeah.
Well, I mean, that's the way we handle it. I don't necessarily think that's.
No, but the reason why we wouldn't want to go pick a random spot and add it there, because then you're free to spend anywhere else, but we could have a line item somewhere else in the budget that you don't have authority to move around, like the Select Board.
Where you account for overages?
We would put $30,000 in there.
That is an elegant solution, John.
Because it solves your issue that, you know, we're gonna overspend, so that means I either have to bake in $33,000 of surplus somewhere in here.
As long as it's accounted for somewhere, that's great. I just don't, the widening gap makes me a little anxious.
Because right now, you're having to pull it out of general highway expenses, right?
Or wherever. I mean, again, we've had, we've had open positions, so we've been able to make up for some of these deficiencies with wage money, but at the same time, I've got guys that are, have been working shorthanded for, I think, I sent you an email recently. The last time we were fully staffed was 2018.
Yeah.
That's a long time to be working shorthanded, and I know I'm feeling it, and I know the guys are, too.
But that little kind of reserve that you're talking about would only be used for the purposes of offsetting any over expenditure in, in winter roads, is that right?
Well, that's, I mean, that sounds like what John's proposing, and that's.
Right, because it's not gonna be there so that it could be used for other line items in your budget.
I'm not opposed to that strategy.
And that's why I was suggesting you put it in someone else's budget, like the town administrator's budget, that's controlled by the Select Board.
Yeah, so it's, all right.
So with the 180?
Ed is asking to be heard.
Yeah, with 180,000 that you've got in there now for FY '23, that's, that's the?
100, I'm sorry.
180,150.
Maybe I should have colored the current year green. I colored FY '23 green so that, oh wait, I'm sorry, maybe I should let you finish a question.
So that's what?
The 180 is for FY '23.
That's the budgeted amount.
That's, that's what I asked for last year. I was still only given 122,100.
Okay, okay, so again.
I'm sorry, appropriated, not given.
Okay, all right. So eventually, as we look at actual expenses against that, then we have a better sense of what that's really looking like, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, just to remind everybody that the worst-case scenario of deficit spending on snow and ice is town or the city can't find the money either within the budget or somebody else's budget to cover it. That means whatever you are short in that particular year automatically goes to your tax recap, you know, so if you're 30, 50, $100,000 short, you're actually adding that much on that you have, it's actually taken from your levy for the following fiscal year.
Even if money was taken from, like, operational stabilization?
Well, then you found a way to cover it.
Okay, so it's only if it's not covered?
Only if you can't cover it.
If you can't cover it, correct.
Okay. Anybody else? Questions right there on winter wages?
And Ed and I have worked so far to find ways to cover it, and it's been a lot of, a lot of shuffling.
It's the upside of staffing issues, basically.
Yeah, if there is an upside, and there's not really.
Yeah, and if you didn't have the vacancies in your staffing, you'd have to be pulling it out of general highway, I assume, which then dips into your Chapter 90.
Or somewhere else, because if I had staff, we would be out doing the work.
Right.
You know?
You can only cut away so far until you hit the bone, and you're already halfway through the bone.
Yep, agreed.
Okay, what's the next, Stormwater Compliance?
Yeah, that's the last category for expenses, is the. Yeah, that's the last category for expenses, is the stormwater compliance. To give everybody in listening in the audience, this is a, for compliance with a federal discharge permit, where our catch basins discharge stormwater into water bodies. It's an EPA permit that we're obligated to comply with. A big part of it is a consultant that we use to help us navigate and write out the annual reports. We also are a member of the Connecticut River Stormwater Coalition. Southampton, I'm the representative with, I believe we have 20 other towns. And we try and find ways to, cost-saving measures, templates and things that we can all utilize in order to comply with the requirements of the permit.
And I thought that at least one or two years, it shifted over to, it wasn't in your operating budget, I think it was covered under something else, like operational stabilization?
It's, um...
Or some other way we funded, it wasn't in your budget?
Might have been free cash, could have been operational stabilization, but it's bounced in and out.
So that would still show up as your budget?
Well, I mean, it would show up that I, we spent that much on it.
Okay.
Not necessarily where it came from. Because honestly, if, I don't want to complicate this too much, but because when we get to the end of the year, I might have overspent in one account and underspent in another, we end up doing budget line transfers, I've moved them all back to where they're supposed to be, so that it shows the real, this is what we spent in this category, if you get what I mean.
Regardless of the source?
Exactly.
Is that true for, what you just said, is that true for 14 through 22 on this sheet?
Yes.
These are, these are expenditure numbers?
Yes.
23 is requested because you haven't finished out the year yet.
Right.
20, yeah, yes.
All right, okay.
Yep. There is one variable we need to talk about under the stormwater compliance for next year. We have a placeholder for the consultant cost, but under the permit, we have to perform an example project that, it's a retrofit of a town-owned facility that will take nutrients out of the stormwater. I've discussed with Tyon, our consultant, to try and find the most affordable project that we can do, and they're still working on getting me that number.
It sounds like an MVP thing, right? I mean, is, I wonder...
Well, if we can find another funding source for it, that would be fantastic.
What'd it cost?
I don't have the number yet.
Depends on the project, I imagine.
Yes, yep.
Yeah, I mean, it might, depending, it might fit into the MVP grant process, and that's going to be opening up in the next week or two for this fiscal year.
I will talk to my consultant and try and get them to get us some numbers so we can And that is all the expenses. I can jump over to wages now, if you would like. So...
We're down three of four positions, Randall.
We are down, well, we're down three positions officially, and then I have someone out on medical.
Okay, right, right.
So, green up here are the union negotiated rates for next year. And then I do a calculation of, because we split between general highway wages and winter roads wages, I calculate winter roads wages at 19 weeks, and then general highway has to cover the 33 rest of the weeks of the year. I've done an average of how many hours of overtime we've used in the, in, during the summertime, let's say, for thunderstorms or trees come down on the road. There's more than you'd think, but it does happen. And then projected hours of overtime in the winter is for, I didn't change the heading up here, but basically, it's nine, 10-hour storms for overtime, which is...
In a 33-week period?
Uh, no, for, that's during the winter, that's for 19 weeks.
Oh, okay, right, right.
And then I've, in order to give you some confidence of that overtime, I did spreadsheet to the last three years for averages of overtime used, plus the call-in drivers that we use. So for the wage calculation, I'm confident that this is within the realm of where we'll Here again, we were, I think we were appropriated this year 142,000, and so my ask is, is this for winter roads wages? And this is the number for highway wages for the rest of the 33 weeks. Those are the two line items where I got the numbers from, and it's based on calculations in this, in this spreadsheet.
I don't think we had that page printed out, you know, thing at some point.
Yeah, it was, I had three, three tabs in the, in the workbook that I sent you.
Yeah, I think we didn't, we got the first tab.
The historical expenses was the only one that got printed out?
Yeah, that, what we've been looking at, the building and highway.
Okay, yeah, so the other two are on, on that same workbook.
Yeah, so maybe just shoot the workbook around. So the, the budget draft that I have, column one is moving it over since it's not technically contractual, although the wages are. Why is it, why would column one be the same then? Under winter roads. Okay, wait a minute, wages, hang on, 142, 181. What are you looking at? Yeah, 181, 112. So that's column one and two, right? 112, right. Okay. I just want to make sure it lines up with what I'm looking at. Okay. Anything else in the...
For the, maybe I should mention that the open positions, I put in, I calculate them that, calculated them at mid-range on the, the union scale, just to have something to put in. You know, whatever it is, I've got to work within a budget, so I would like to find super-qualified people, but, you know, I don't think I could afford to hire three of them at the top of the range, so...
That makes sense.
Just to give you a sense of how I've kind of attacked this.
And what are those three positions that are open again?
I have a mechanic position and two machine operators, and then should the medical not return, that would be a third machine operator position.
And this includes the admin assistant, too?
Admin assistant is a different line. She is actually down further. She has her own, has her own line in the budget, and it's just based on 20 hours at her, her rate.
That looks like it was actually down from 2022.
There was, I think there was a slight error in the calculation last year, I believe.
Yeah.
It was over, over-calculated.
Okay. It wasn't a reduction in hours?
No, nope. She does 20 for highway and five for the transfer station.
Mm-hmm.
And the transfer station is under the transfer station count, correct?
Just scroll down so we see that, we don't have that on our...
The what?
Just scroll down so we see that first, we didn't have it on our...
Okay.
Okay. So that would be the... Yeah. Hard to read.
21.
21, yeah. Okay. All right. So...
That, I'm sorry, that number that's in there, that's reflective of what you have in your narrative?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. So if we're done with your spreadsheet, we might pull up Bradley's, just to be sure that we're understanding that one, because that's where...
Sure, I actually have that one. Or Bradley, would you like to pull it up yourself?
If you...
I can, do I have to hit something to stop sharing?
Yeah, you have to hit the red button there.
Yeah. So...
Okay.
Just to get the, the big picture here of everything all together, maybe? Do you have another spreadsheet for transfer station?
Um, we are not completed with all of the numbers for transfer station yet, so we're very close, but we have two numbers that we have to work out.
Okay. And there, you're fully staffed, or?
I mean, I have one employee there, and then a bullpen of call-in assistants, basically, so...
I'll throw it out, because I've, I've heard the, the request, and maybe you have too, the idea of having a laptop over there for entering in permits for everybody that comes to renew their, their transfer station permit, rather than handwriting everything and just having it on a spreadsheet that somebody can access?
We've, we've discussed this. I don't, I'm not opposed to the idea of a laptop, but I am opposed to taking on an additional expense of having a data line. So if it was something that could be stored right on the laptop and then transferred over, then I'm definitely for it, because it saves my office a step of data entry.
And have you, have you looked, because I think I heard from the same person you did, have you looked at, we're already paying for internet, or cable?
Cable.
There, and we're already paying for a phone there, right? They have a phone.
Mm-hmm.
The possibility of consolidating all that, and I, I don't know if it's Verizon or what the deal is with it all, but the internet more than likely is what? I mean, the package would be $30 or $40 a month?
Well, I know from personal, my, my own, we gave up our, we never had a home phone, and we gave up the cable because they were giving great deals to new subscribers, but not people who have been paying for years. So we brought ours back, and we obviously need internet. I think we pay like $80 a month for internet. That's a lot.
So, all right, so we don't have a price?
Don't, no.
We don't, okay.
No, but I mean, my assumption is it's...
Okay.
Eighty-ish.
What about hotspots that they, they put up during COVID?
Anything is going to be an additional cost, whether it's a hotspot or...
Yeah, I know, but would it be as much, is what I'm asking?
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Because, I mean, the other thing is, you talked about, what was your retained earnings last year at the transfer station? $26,000?
We don't know yet.
Well, the last year that it was, that allowed you to buy these masters, I thought it was 26.
That sounds right, 30-ish.
Right, so $80 a month, even if it said 100, it's 1,200 bucks. You have surplus revenue?
No, we don't, because we have a $10,000 environmental testing that has to be done this year that's not done every year.
Okay, so that leaves 16,000.
So this year being 23 or 24?
Transfer stations.
Upcoming.
The one up, coming up 24? What was the question, Francine?
Oh, you said you have a $10,000...
The test.
Yeah, for FY '24, we have $10,000 more in environmental testing over the...
You know, we don't have all the figures for transfer station yet, anyway, so we can come back around on that, but I just wanted to say that that, that had been a request that had come to my ear, so...
Yeah, figuring out, I mean, I don't, I don't think we, getting back to the original question, I am for data entry at the transfer station. I don't necessarily agree that we need a data connection. It can all be, I mean, computers can hold data and then be transferred.
On a flash drive?
Yes, absolutely.
Right, so, but I guess where I come off on my fiduciary side is that is the one location that deals with cash. And if you had an IP address there, you could easily pop a camera, and you got cash there. Now, if you're suggesting you eliminate cash, I'd be okay with that.
We tried eliminating cash in the past, yeah, we've talked about this. People went wild.
So I mean, I just see it as a possibility of a bigger...
Yeah, okay. Well, let's, we'll come back around to that, when you get your figures on.
Yeah, it's something we can discuss, certainly.
Okay, so, yes, Ed, sorry.
I'm just going to say, in my five years I've been here, I've actually been very surprised that the auditing firm hasn't had a comment on the transfer station of removing the cash.
Right, and I want to be clear.
Yeah.
I believe that your employees down there are doing a stellar job, and I'm not saying anything, I'm just saying it is a location that has cash.
Yeah, no, I agree.
That's all.
But we try to provide a paper trail for everything, documentation.
Yeah, but if you put cameras in and something happens at night, the PD could tone into them like they do at the school department, next thing you know, you're getting the litter bugs and people dropping mattresses over the fence in the middle of the night. Lot positives.
Yeah, okay.
Good, all right. Okay, so what do we have? This is, so this is the total for the highway department in the, in the combined budget that Bradley you've put together, right? So... Brandon, about this, Mac? Yeah, you can have it. I'd rather have things electronically, anyway. So the, okay, I've got a little bit of a different one, I may be on the wrong version then. Okay. Want me to send it to you? I have it up right now. I got the one from Bradley from about a week ago.
One million?
I have a million 1117 on the wish list.
It's going to change your...
I have 1175. Is that what it is? Okay. Yeah, yeah, that's what it is. I'll send this to you. All right, so what are, what are we looking at on this spreadsheet, Bradley? Just tell us what we got here.
We have fiscal year '22 total expenses. I have a new column of fiscal year '22 total expenses in this column. I have approved budget for fiscal year '23, and then amended budget that includes any transfers throughout the year so far. And then this column is the first request for fiscal year '24, and this column is the wish list for all departments.
Okay, so that's what we got for the highway. Okay. So the, the spreadsheet that you've just worked with feeds into these, these figures, then?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yes. Yeah, we went through my workbooks, which generated the numbers that were presented on this one.
Okay. All right, so more things that you'd like to say, or?
You have my budget narrative that goes through it with a lot more words than anybody wants to hear.
Yeah, but honestly, thank you for that. This is a lot of detail, but it's, it's really helpful to understand how each category is looked at, because it's almost...
It's a big budget, and I want it to be as transparent as possible, because people wonder where the money goes, and I don't have a problem showing you.
Yeah, no, I think this is very helpful to understand, you know, some of the rationale behind these figures here that we might not think of offhand, so... Anybody have any questions about some of the narrative here or anything?
If you think of anything, you all have my contact information.
Yeah, we do.
More than happy to answer questions, because...
Yeah, we do. Yeah. Thanks, Rand. Okay, okay. Okay.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, appreciate it. Bradley, what's the date of that budget spreadsheet, please?
This one's from March 10th.
March 10th, okay. Oh, actually, the one I was looking at was 3/9. I've got 3/9, too, so, okay.
So this was a Friday, Ed and I worked on it.
Oh, okay.
So I might have never sent it to you.
Okay. Yeah, we have the 3/9 version. It says version two. So there is a, there is a March 10th version? Does it 3/10 say version three?
There is no version, it's just called March 10th.
Okay, all right. All right, so at some point, yeah, we'll shoot that around to us. There might have been some tweaking that happened. Yeah, so just, I mean, it's close, but there's definitely a few, a few figures different. So that's probably one where you would have added in some of the fire expenses, because we didn't have that.
Yes, fire was updated, and I added the actual expenses.
Okay. The actual what?
Actual expenses.
For the various departments. Yeah, okay. So that, that will be great to have sent around, then, yeah. I've got the ninth as well. Perfect, okay, so, next, yeah. We'll get Ian all set up here. Oops. Great. All right, so you can probably stop sharing at the moment, and we'll let Ian get on here.
Alright, so you can probably stop sharing at the moment and we'll let Ian get on here.
How do I get on?
You would go to that link, that code, one-nine-two-one-six-eight dot ten dot one-five-three in your browser.
My browser, okay.
Hi.
So am I gonna go onto the internet?
So I just wanna note that, um...
She's getting it through the browser.
Lambing season started, so I may be late in the future again, as we have baby lambs. Lambing.
Oh, that's adorable. How many lambs do you have?
Three so far, one in the house.
Which, which, uh, should it be, um, Firefox, you think, would be better?
Uh, we have a troll's hole.
Always the crowdest stuff of the year.
Yes.
Don't worry.
Standing right here?
Yep, one-nine-two-one-six-eight, so type in the dots.
He'll end up having to install the, yeah.
Might as well not even try the browser.
Alright.
Hit enter. And, uh, right there.
Yeah, you want me to just go right to?
Yeah, I can't even read.
Let me see. Is that the risk?
We're gonna just install and maybe try. Put that up.
Am I clicking right here?
Just on...
Yeah, what's it asking? Go ahead, you hop right in there.
Before the meeting ends, that as well.
Does your computer require you to sign in?
Mm-hmm. Any other business?
Aw, man, and admin.
Anywhere, some...
I couldn't remember what we talked about.
I will, I will.
Nope. Thank you, Dan.
Uh, let me have a little code, quick check.
I'm gonna try to run the app. He needs to sign in.
For an admin? I'm pretty sure I have that somewhere. I'll go get my laptop.
Jesus, good to know.
First, I tell ya, I am not technical.
So even...
Okay, here it is right here. I have it, Ed, I think I have it.
Yeah?
Let me get in there.
It's going to ask you to submit agreement. I'm gonna follow the law and read it all.
No, you're not.
Yes, I am.
Yeah, if you can read that fast, then you need to be somewhere else.
I love our technology here. This thing is just...
It's all there.
Beyond crazy, in terms of its ease of connection.
Okay, so now, when we're here, we say, well, I'm...
Hang in there, folks, we'll be back.
Number one there already?
Yeah.
Chris?
Yes.
Are we taking up the March twenty-first stuff tonight, too?
I'm sorry?
March twenty-first, that's in the package, are we taking that up tonight?
No, it's, it's just part of your package since we won't be back in before that, so.
Gotcha.
Nope, just these two agenda items tonight. And I guess we need to figure out, um, when or how finance can meet, probably because what we would do would be schedule another meeting, um, probably the next meeting we'd have joint one, we try to do a joint one, would be with fire department.
Alright, I'm gonna go right to my...
Yep.
I was going to suggest that before the meeting ends, that just like four pick two or three more departments for next Thursday night. Thank you, John.
So... Not working?
Okay.
Oh, my goodness.
Alright.
Oh, alright, just in the nick of time.
Thank you, Ian.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm gonna hope that once we use this, you know, laptop once, that it would remember how to hook in next time, but I don't know if that always happens.
It would, it would help if I was a little bit more savvy, but that's not the case.
This is not the easiest system to manipulate, I think.
Okay, good evening.
So let's take a look at what you got here, thank you.
Okay, so what I'll do is I'll start off first with the communications budget, um, and what I'll do is I'll, you know, tell me if I'm not at the right pace, if I'm going too slow or too fast, please just let me know, because I'm not quite sure what you're, exactly you're looking for, but I'll go through how I came with my budget. It's a zero balance budgeting process that I did, and that basically is from ground zero all the way up to where I am at, so it's, it causes for a very lean budget, but a very, um, transparent budget, and it doesn't account for, um, incidentals. For instance, if there was a, uh, a cruiser that engine blown, there's no room in my budget for that, and that's just so you know. So, we'll start off with, uh, the dispatch communications department has two, uh, accounts. They have dispatch wages and dispatch expenses, and I'll explain how we get to each. So for every full-time employee, I have a spreadsheet here, and, and I developed this spreadsheet and it accounts for their, you'll see that there's two, I'm just gonna go through one so you understand each, each, each person, but, um, what it does is, based on when they were hired, it will account for their step increase. So for instance, this particular employee, um, this accounts for only, the first on the left will show, uh, point forty-eight months under that, um, pay rate of eighteen-seventy-six, and then, uh, point fifty-two months for the rest of the year under nineteen-twenty-nine. And that how, that's how it comes up with the annual base salary. It also includes, um, uh, their vacation days and personal time as well paid out, and I split those fifty-fifty between the year. So that's how each individual, um, and those are contractual rates, the, uh, the dispatchers are contractual rates based on their years of experience. So each individual dispatcher, um, has, goes through, full-time dispatchers goes through this process. And so when you look at the budget summary, our full-time dispatchers will come out to one-hundred-and-seventy-six-thousand-nine-hundred-and-four-eighty-four.
And just remind us, number of full-time dispatchers?
Four full-time dispatchers. And, uh, so then, we'll go to, um, the dispatch overtime expenses. I come up with a median rate between their overtime rate, which is thirty-three sixty-six. I don't do the average, I do median, and, um, what I do is open shifts per week. You can see the, uh, as you go down, the purpose, the wage purpose, and it's basically calculated, I try to calculate it on the last three years or two and a half years based on the, this one was, um, in fiscal year twenty-two, it shows that thirty-nine percent of open shifts covered by, uh, full-time dispatchers. It goes through the vacation, how much was covered by full-time dispatches versus part-time dispatchers. So, and that's based on previous years, and I go through that.
Isn't that also contractual? Isn't there, wasn't there something around prior?
No, they don't have first rate of refusal.
Oh, you don't?
Yes, it's basically on availability of, of the part-time dispatchers. And then overtime holidays, all employees get overtime. And it continues down to the next page, wage purposes, professional development, um, this, you see, full, this is again, this is overtime, so it's for dispatchers at sixteen hours, it's a required sixteen hours a year for professional development, per the, uh, CMRs for the state nine-one-one department. Uh, first responder CPR training, it's not required for this year, it's every two years, so they don't have to do it this year, so I don't include that. And then we try to get the dispatchers down to all the lockdown trainings, so they understand the layout of the school and the process as much as possible, so we, we, I include that. I attempt to do semi-annual staff meetings every year, um, with the dispatchers and the, and the patrol officers, however, sometimes based on, uh, uh, our current fiscal issues, I might not be able to do that. So overtime wages amount to, uh, that, that, that number right there.
Did you also recently hire, did you also recently hire a per diem or on-call person?
So, we do, uh, not per diem, it's, it's part-time, we consider them part-time employees, so I have, I believe, a total now of six part-time dispatchers. And what those part-time dispatchers do is, so with the current full-time staffing, you will, will always have two open shifts a week that are not covered by full-time staffing. These four full-time dispatches will not cover all the shifts.
Right.
So consequently, what we need to do is, uh, we try to augment or, or fill those shifts with part-time dispatchers.
Mm-hmm.
If we can't get part-time dispatchers to work those shifts, then it goes to overtime.
Okay.
And that's the rule, and, and part-time will also take care of, um, again, vacation, as much vacation as we can, personal day use and sick day use. Um, a lot of times, that's on midnights and, uh, or the weekdays, or whatever it may be, the weekends, and sometimes those dispatchers just aren't available to work.
And Ian, just remind us of the shift timeframes again? You've got three shifts?
We have three shifts. So the, the dispatchers work, uh, seven in the morning till three PM, three PM to eleven, uh, PM, and then eleven PM to, um, uh, seven AM. And there's an overlap with police, so when we could talk about the police, I just commented about that. Now the police work eight to four, four to twelve, and then twelve to eight AM. And the reason being is so that there's, uh, an hour of, um, we don't want all the shifts leaving at once, so in case there's any communication issues, at least the dispatchers will know what happened on the previous shift, if, uh, the, if something wasn't communicated. So that's just some strategy.
Is this the highest number of part-time people you've had?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, typically, we always had four part-time, uh, dispatchers.
Okay.
Um, uh, so I tried to increase it to, we, we actually just lost one that resigned, so there was a, a total of eleven.
Oh, wow.
Uh, I'm, I should say seven, seven part-time dispatchers, not eleven, seven part-time dispatchers. A total of eleven employees.
Now, six. Are you hoping that this will help with reducing overtime?
Absolutely, yes, that's what I'm hoping for, and I'm, um, what I'm seeing is, and the trends are, and it's not just with police, it's dispatch, I think it's a lot of municipal employment, uh, especially when you're working in public safety, you're not finding a lot of people that are willing to work weekends, holidays, and nights, and there's just not a lot of competition. And unfortunately, the supply and demand, the supply of emergency public safety dispatchers is, is much less than the demand right now, so it's hard to find them.
Yeah.
And then, part-time wages, this is how I came up with part-time wages. Again, the medium, uh, median part-time wage is, uh, hourly rate is twenty-fourty-four. Weekend open shifts, um, it shows based on sixty-one percent of open shifts covered by part-time in fiscal year twenty-two, and that just kinda gives you an idea of, of, of where we're at with how much they, they, they're working. I, based on trends, it'll probably go even less hours. Um, that's why I'm trying to get more part-time dispatchers to, to kinda, um, because I recognize that trend and I want more availability, because if I only had four or three part-time dispatchers, I wouldn't be able to get any shifts filled, a very, very few less. Um, so it goes right down through vacation cover, and that's based on, uh, previous year, sick cover, personal cover, and then on the other side, all the other, uh, reasons for part-time dispatchers. Longevity, we have a dispatcher, uh, we have two, the part-time dispatchers in, contractually are, uh, entitled to longevity, and so that's their longevity, two, the two dis, uh, part-time dispatchers is seven-hundred and a thousand dollars. So that will explain, that explains the process on how I came up with those numbers. Now you have shift differentials. This is a, a constant. Shift differentials are constant because you have to have one dispatcher on per, per shift. So this doesn't change, and the shift differentials I have here for weekend shift differentials, they get a, a dollar an hour extra based on contractual, uh, agreements, and that comes up to that figure there, and then their actual shift differential between working midnights and the evening shift, that's the constant number between the two shifts, and that's how it's, how it's established.
Does that include holidays?
Yes, yes. That includes, uh, three-hundred-and-sixty-five days a year. And then some additional reg, regular wages, um, holidays work, holiday hours paid to dispatchers not work in a holiday, because if they get, so they average thirty-seven-and-a-half-hour week, uh, uh, hours a week based on a four-and-two schedule. If they work a, if they're not working on a scheduled holiday, they get an extra eight hours of, of pay, so it's forty-five-and-a-half hours a week, and so that's where that number comes up. And again, it's based on the median regular rate of a full-time dispatcher. And then field training, contractually, if they're training somebody, they get a seven percent increase in their pay. And fiscal year twenty-two was minimal, we did have a lot of training this year, but the figures are really, really small, so I didn't, I didn't really, uh, focus too much on that. And dispatch expenses, so our, every dispatcher, I mean, every dispatcher, well, pursuant to the state nine-one-one department, we have to provide, because we're a public safety answering point for nine-one-one calls, we have to provide, um, uh, uh, emergency medical dispatch. So when the dispatcher's answered a phone, it's a medical issue, they have to, they're, that's their first level of, of care is from the dispatcher. So that maintenance fee is part of that. That's the maintenance fee that we have every year from, from power phone is our provider, the vendor for that, and that's a state-approved vendor. There's only three power phones, one of them. Um, dispatcher professional development courses, they can range a lot, um, it's about, you know, three-hundred is, is, is the higher end, um, and it's, they have to have sixteen hours of professional development. Every dispatcher has to have sixteen hours of professional development. Food reimbursements, if they were to go to a class, that's an average of, let's say, twenty dollars a, a meal or a lunch, if they were to, to, um, uh, when they go to classes. And then, the two, the projected new hire required training, so if I were to, when, typically I'm hiring every year for somebody, because somebody will leave, and, uh, that's, the estimated cost is about three-hundred-and-twenty-nine dollars for EMD, and AppCo One is basically the, the academy, if you will, training for a dispatcher, and that's how much that costs.
And then, back up on uniforms, do you actually provide uniforms?
Where are we here? Yes, yes. And so what that amounts to is based on the summary here, the budget summary, that's where that, I came up with that figure, and from the previous fiscal year, it's about a four-point-two percent increase.
Just that overtime cost way to the fifty-four, how does that compare with last year or last couple of years? That's...
I can tell you.
A bit of an increase, or is that?
So in fiscal year twenty-three, the overtime costs were, was, that was budgeted, was thirty-six-thousand-four-hundred-and-thirty-five. So that is one of the most significant increases is because of, uh, the, my previous years showing that I'm not getting part-time dispatchers to work a lot of the open shifts. A lot of it's being covered by, by full-time dispatchers.
And I think you had mentioned, um, Ian, by the way, did a great presentation to the Cost efficiencies committee, um, and, uh, that'll be on video for anybody that would like to tune into that, too, that gives the innards of how things work, but the shift again is four days on, two days off?
Yes, and I compensated, just so you understand, I didn't just put in more overtime, I compensated and I took away from part-time wages for this fiscal year. So for instance, last year, fiscal year, I requested and received twenty-eight-thousand-one-hundred-and-eighty-seven for part-time wages. This year, it's twenty-two-thousand-two-hundred-and-eight. Okay, so what I, recognizing that, if I'm not gonna be, I, if I don't have the part-time staff or the hours, I'm not gonna keep that same amount of money. I'll put that more towards the overtime figures.
Then on a, on a couple of the grants that you apply for and get pretty much every year, some of that is some sort of an offset for dispatch wages, is it not?
It is, so the reimbursement grants, um, just if I could show the difference between fiscal year twenty-four and, 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 uh, twenty-three, it's about a eleven-thousand-dollar difference, uh, between the two, the two, um, budget requests. So I do, you have a training grant as well as a, um, a support and, uh, incentive grant. The support incentive grant can be equipment, it can, I always put it towards wages, in case I need wages. Uh, at one, probably next year, I might have to put towards a recorder, some of it towards a recorder, at least ten thousand dollars towards a recorder, because the state gave us no notification that they are gonna be removing the recorders from the, they'll, they'll maintain only the nine-one-one lines. The recorders were maintaining all radio consoles as well. That's no longer gonna be the case, so we have to come up with our own recorders for, for the, uh, the, uh, municipal lines, phone lines, as well as the, uh, radio communications. So, but I can use it for that. Um, and it's, that's typically based on our calls and the size of our town is, it's, every year it's about three, thirty-thousand-eight-hundred dollars. And every year, I really haven't, you had to use it, so it just gets rolled back and the, the town absorbs it. I might have to dip into it this year because of all the, uh, overtime that, uh, was unexpected. I might have to dip into it this year because of all the overtime that was unexpected, based on, in particular, the full-time dispatcher resigning.
So does some of that, how does some of that get applied to your budget ask?
It doesn't, no. So what happens is, I reimburse, and then it goes into account that Bradley manages, unless I need it, and typically, in the past, I have not needed it. And then, the town absorbs it.
So it's coming in through the police, but it's actually for the benefit of the entire town's budget, rather than just the police budget, if you're not using it?
The dispatch budget, yes.
Dispatch, yeah, right.
Yes.
Yeah, interesting, okay. Okay. Other questions, people, sorry, I didn't want to monopolize here?
That'll wages.
Okay. All right. All right. Okay with dispatch? Should we move on to police department, I guess?
Oh, so that with dispatch?
Yeah, I think it's with dispatch.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So that was just my budget narrative that you all have seen, my budget summary here. This has changed to, up top, you see that it's a 4.0, you might not be able to see it, can you see? Yeah, right there, 4.4% increase. It actually dropped to a, dropped 0.7%, and the reason is, is I accounted for the fact that I had a transfer from rank of a sergeant to a patrol officer.
That's right.
That included in the actual wage budget, as well as education incentive, so I did change that, and it is... I'll show it to you a little bit later. It's about $11,000, between the two of them, it's about $10,000, but I have the precise number on another spreadsheet. And back to determining the wages of each, of each officer, I have the same process here, it depends on when that officer was hired or during the year, and their step. The average hours is 38.67, that's to include roll call, because they get 15 minutes of roll call every shift, so that's what it averages throughout the 52 weeks a year. And this particular officer clearly was hired in the July, probably maybe July or August, based on that number, and so he'll, and then, he goes to his, actually, his next step is August 1st, which is that accounts for the 0.92% of his, of his next step raise. And so that's how every officer's wage is determined, and I think it's, I don't think you could get any more precise than this, as far as their, their actual wages. We'll go to the part-time wages.
And again, just 10 full-time officers?
There are 10 full-time officers with myself included. So the part-time officers, you have the median wage there is 2233, again, it's not the average, it's the median, so it's right down the middle, all the way, I basically put all the dispatchers, their hourly rate together, and I picked the one in the middle, and this is how, this is determined, so on the weekend, there's about 64 shifts opened that are open, and that's if I have a full staff. As you know, this past year, I hadn't, and as a result of somebody still in the military, I'm still down one, which means I'm down a day shift officer, so that changes, but this is based on a full staff. So, coverage would require, and this does not require, this does not include vacation, personal use, and sick use, this is specifically to open shifts on the weekend, and that's really where the highest number, part of the highest number comes from, with the exception of their, their, their coverage. First responder training, we have that, they, there, we have, everything else is accounted. If you have any questions about these, I don't, again, I don't want to be too verbose here, so if, you know, let me know if you have any questions about each one of these.
Well, all the trainings happen, obviously, when they're not on duty, so is this?
Depending. Sometimes, I actually try to do it on duty. For instance, the Bridge Academy, I can have an officer on duty do all the online stuff, I will actually try for that, I'll try and have them do it online while on duty, if they can. If it's a training that I can, but for full-time, typically not, unless it's roll call training, but that's not an expense.
Yeah.
Well, actually, I should, let me retract that. I changed all of our in-service training to online training. So that actually is, I think that's somewhere, you'll see that in the, in the full-time. You'll see that in the full-time, but oh, here we have right here, annual in-service training, that's why it said zero, is because they can do that all while on the shift. The roll call that they work, everything else here, this is based on, this was a particular hard year to, to plan for, because of the previous year being so unstable, and using that data in that way made it very hard to, to come up with the proper figures, so I went more towards the trend of, and I'll, and I'll show you why in a little bit later, when it, when it comes to the amount of shift hours that the part-time officers working between 2020 and current. It's very, very significant how little much, how little they're working now. So, this is based all on that, as well as, you know, accounting for other years, but I had to take into account that trend, so this was a hard, this was a particularly hard year to, to cover. You'll see the Bridge Academy for one officer, that's 120 hours, that's in-person training, that's where they actually have to go for the training. Actually, some of this, you can see it for the fiscal years right here, for instance, fiscal year '21, they, the part-time officers worked 4,129 shift hours. Fiscal year '22, 2,411, and fiscal year '23, you can tell it's, it's only 1932, so it's, you can see it's trending, that, and ultimately, through attrition, there will be no part-time officers sooner or later.
Right.
Except unless they're retired officers, and, because there will no longer be a part-time academy, and so that's, ultimately, it's going to happen, it's just a matter of years, how many years.
And part of the issue is that the part-timers don't want to really attend the academy?
Some can't, because for instance, at 120 hours, they're going to have to take vacation from their regular full-time employment to make that certification requirement. It's defensive driving, it's defensive tactics, and patrol procedures, and that's all in-person.
And that's not a requirement of their full-time position?
It is, so when you go to the full-time academy, you're already getting that training.
Right.
That was not training that was established in that part-time academy pre-police reform. So as a, as a means to bridge those officers to a full-time training level, they added these.
Yeah. No, the issue, too, was that wages weren't covered for that, but it, but the actual price for the academy was covered, is, have you built that in at all?
So there's no fees, and as long as I can have the majority of the, the officers do it while on shift, sure, that 120 hours, that's all I have to pay.
Okay. So it's not separate wages?
No.
It's like three weeks.
Yeah.
That's a lot of time.
Yeah, sure is.
Right, so someone whose full-time job is a civil engineer, has to use, or three weeks of vacation time at their full-time job.
Which is actually the case.
Requirement here.
So I have a civil engineer that's, you know, working for us as a part-time, but he's, he's willing to do it, he's got enough time in, and he, you know, he, this officer's willing to do it, but, exactly right, not a lot of people are willing to do that, or can do that.
It's a huge barrier. Yeah, no, it really is. Ian, just, just up on the math, just so I understand, just the 64 shift hours, the very first one?
Yep.
64 shift?
64 shifts, so it's equivalent of 512 hours, so what that means is, because the police officers work a four-and-two, I have, that'll be two-day officers. When I say weekend shift coverage, that's weekend day, weekend day shift. So when you have them working a four-and-two schedule, I believe it's an average of eight, every eight, every 16 weeks, I'm sorry, every six weeks, they have a weekend off, a Saturday, a Friday and a Saturday, a Saturday and Sunday off. Every 16 weeks, they have a Friday and a Saturday off, every six weeks, rather. So the way it rotates, you can, it amounts to 512 hours not covered by full-time officers on the weekends, because my lieutenant is, has administrative schedule. So to make that number go away, you would have to have three full-time patrol officers working a four-and-two on the day shift. I have two, when I have two. I haven't had two in a while. So that's based on a full staff.
Got it.
Okay?
Questions? Yes?
So these are the additional regular wages, so this is calculated, holidays, hours paid to officers not working a holiday, like I explained, very similar to the dispatchers, that's where that number comes up. Shift differential, that is a constant. Officer in charge, that's based on previous years, I averaged the, so the officer in charge is, if it's a patrol officer, and they are the most senior officer, they get a 7% increase in their pay rate, and that's based, that's how much it costs, based on, on previous, the previous years. Field training was minimal, but we still had it. And then, if we go over just a little bit more here, this is weekend shift differentials, again, that is a, so long as we have two officers on every shift, that is the constant. So that's a constant there, okay? And that's all based, again, that's all based on contractual issues, agreements. Overtime wages, so if we fill, so that, that category right here, just like I explained, if we fill them with part-time officers, provided that we have the part-time officers to do it, we wouldn't have any overtime for that, so I, you know, that's based on part-time officers working every open weekend shift. My requirement is that there has to be a full-time officer working with every part-time officer, for continuity, as well as experience. So I will not allow two part-time officers to work with each other. Vacation coverage, again, I'm going on trending here, and this is not too far from the previous years, I do have the previous, I can give you what the previous years was, based on the fiscal year '23. It was actually fiscal year '21, okay, so it was the part-time, fiscal year '21, 1% coverage was, so it's due to part-time shorting staff, it was just 50% expected, so it was sane, so it was sane, it was the same, so it's essentially the same as the previous years. Sick cover, sick is much higher than vacation, because vacation's planned, sick isn't, so oftentimes, there's, every time there's a sick day, it's typical that there's forces. Personal day coverage, it's not as planned, especially with, there's a contractual agreement that they can do it within 72 hours, and it can't be refused, and that's often what happens, something comes up. And holiday cover, it's about 50%, 50/50. Annual in-service training, I do it all online. And court, based on the last previous years, was about 42 hours, and that's, that's how much that would be, based on the median overtime rate. Professional development training, online, that's if I were to do any more professional development with them. I don't have that in there, trying to keep things down, I, I want them to have professional development as much as I can, but I recognize that things are tight, so I actually don't include it. Investigations, based on fiscal year '22 and '23, as you know, I've explained in the past budget, quarterly reports, rather, our investigations have increased significantly. Semi-annual staff meetings, I didn't even account for those, you know, I did on the dispatch end, I didn't, because I'm trying to stay in a, I don't want too much of a percentage increase, so I didn't include that. I did, obviously, for the lockdown trainings, that's very important and required. Firearms training, that's, it says nine officers, because oftentimes, you know, officers that are on duty, I'll just have them train, and I'll take the calls for service, and they can just train, so I don't include them as overtime. And that is, it could be two here. Nope, that's, so that's overtime? Any concerns about overtime wages?
No.
Okay. Custodian, this is based on last year.
Yep.
Building expenses, I averaged previous years. Electric's difficult, because it's increasing significantly, so that was an average, it probably will be more than that, I expect it probably will, but that's where I'm at for a number there. Oil, gas, and electric has increased significantly as well. This is based on, I actually tried to include, as you can tell, based on those increases, I included the six months of the fiscal year, to try to get as accurate as possible, I did that with electric as well. I did put incidentals, because oftentimes, something breaks, and I have to fix it within the building, and that's probably pretty low for incidentals. Water department, that's based on fiscal year '23. Septic service, trash disposal, that's all, and all based on what we've done, this is all based on, on current, current costs. Any questions there?
So the total on that one is like 22 something?
From last year, I can tell you. It's about a 2,000, I'm sorry, a $4,000 increase from last year.
That doesn't include any electrical increase, right?
I'm sorry?
That doesn't include any electrical projections or?
To some degree, it does, because I, as you can, where I put the, I did project, I used fiscal year '23's the first six months of the fiscal year with the, with the increases that we saw, so I did include that as part of my average.
And did we join up with the, I know we talked about, under cost efficiencies, we'd been talking about combined maintenance contracts with the boiler?
I decided to have our custodian do it himself. I buy the filters, and he replaces the filters every two months, because it was a significant, it was a significant cost.
Oh, good. Now, there was, I think, $100,000 awarded to the building from ARPA, remember?
The envelope study, maybe, is that what it was?
Well, no, not that, but there was, as a result of the envelope study, was there, wasn't there ARPA awarded to the building? Is there anything that's going to be an improvement that the department will realize, or it is all just structural?
No, this was all exterior, this, that was all for woodwork repair and painting on the outside, it was all the, all outside stuff, yep.
Glazing repair.
Okay, so I have three spreadsheets for police expenses, and this is based on some of the, uniform allowances, contractual, my in-service, that is what it was from the last in-service I went to this, this previous year, this year, rather. Officer in-service training, it doesn't, I don't have to pay for anything for that, because of, it's free, it's online. EMT research classes, I don't have to do any of those, they did it this year, so I don't have to pay, it's every two years they have to recertify. Cruiser repairs are significant this year, a lot of, I should say, maintenance and cruiser repairs, more maintenance, tires are getting expensive, we had to replace a lot of tires on cars.
When's the last time you replaced a vehicle, or got a new vehicle?
2000, our newest car is a 2020, and I think it was 2019 when an officer was in a motor vehicle crash.
Wasn't it at one point common practice to replace one vehicle every year? Maybe not through the general fund budget, but?
I can't say it was common practice, I would say probably every other year it was.
Every other, okay.
Yeah, I would say probably every other year.
My guess is the vehicle that got in the accident?
I know one year.
The vehicle that got in the accident wasn't the oldest one in the fleet?
It was.
Oh, good.
It was. One year that they did purchase consecutively two, and it was because there was such a lapse in time where, that all the cruisers were in bad shape, so they, the board at the time, and, as well as capital, that was prior to my becoming a chief.
And I think you've got two now, right, that are excessive mileage?
We have, well, there's?
Over $100,000.
Expecting you to answer that question.
So according to the last fuel fills, I have, my cruisers are about 130,000, I have another car at 134,000, and another car at 97,860. So those cars are all getting up there. In fact, as I said in that meeting the other day, to have a car at 134,000 miles, they get driven hard, and the car still runs well, it does, but it's only a matter of time before that 134,000 miles is going to take its toll on.
And I'm assuming you have those on your fleet replacement schedule?
I didn't.
I mean, are they, have we already passed that deadline and we didn't replace them? Or they're?
I asked for a cruiser last year, I didn't get one, there was, clearly the highway needed so much more stuff than, than the police department, but I, I do have a request this year for a cruiser. Fuel increased significantly, I, I factored in fiscal year 23, it changed to about 1850 a month, it was roughly about $1,500 a month for gas, it's now about 1850 a month. That could change, I don't know. We only have three mobile data terminals and cruisers, so that's the average, that's $120, $20 a month for those three plans, so they can get data while on the road. That's that page, any questions on that page? Here we are with just copy paper, toner, this is based on how many, how many cartridges I bought a year, and I went on Amazon and figured out what the average price was. Media storage, labels, folders, psych tests, I imagine that's going to get more expensive, but psych test, every time we hire a new employee, it's required to have a psych test. Medical evaluation's the same thing. The PAT test for new officer, that, that is basically a physical agility test, I didn't include that, it's, it's not that expensive. Full-time recruit academy, unless we put a full-time police officer on, that requires the academy, that would be, I think, I believe it's a $3,000 fee, I haven't put somebody through in a while, I see, I think it's 3,000, I don't know if it's increased either. Medical equipment is about $500. Ballistic vests, right now, if we were to hire three officers, it would be, it's $1,000 a vest, on, based on contracts with the state.
Do you replace those periodically?
Every five years now, contractually, they have to be replaced, contractually. Yes, we just replaced, we just did 10. We just did 10, and we should, we may have, and I'm not quite sure if we actually got the reimbursement, we had a 50% reimbursement through the ballistic vest program through the DOJ, and so $5,000 should either be here or it's, it's on its way. They gave me confirmation that it's being reimbursed.
Yeah. On the, I'm just thinking of other things, the computerized signs that were bought under the CARES Act?
That, that's in here, it's under, it's under maintenance, in maintenance.
Okay, so the?
Yep.
That ongoing data subscription or whatever it is?
We'll go, yeah, we'll, we'll, under equipment maintenance, we'll, we'll talk about that. Police expenses, a, a large expense is qualifications, so to, they have to qualify on their firearms twice a year, and they each, every officer has their own assigned pistol, fire, and then they, the cruisers have rifles in them, and so between, the ammunition can be, get expensive and the amount of rounds that they have to do, and it's twice a year they have to do that. Taser qualifications are very expensive, it's two cartridges, 19 officers, that's, that's their going rate right now. Radar calibration, so every cruiser has to get their radar calibrated, that's about $500 a year. Language link is, so if officers are at a scene and they need to connect with somebody, it's $100, that's open to everybody in town, by the way, I pay that, but that's a fee, that's, if anybody in town needs that, we have a code and you can, it's, you can be used. Cruiser type, we'll need three cars with tire replacements next year, and then just a labor law poster and dues. And the hotel expenses, I put that in there because unfortunately, a lot of the training is not in Western Mass. In fact, some of the, the EVAC training, which is that defensive training, it's all the way out in the Cape, so obviously they can't come back and forth, and otherwise it's at, it's in, where's that, decommissioned base? Yes, yes, Devens, it's there, and between the, the hour and a half of getting back and the fuel, it's cheaper to put them up in a hotel.
I do have one question, what is the less lethal under firearms qualification?
Where are we here?
The top. It's in parentheses, next to rifle.
So what we have is, we have less lethal, which is a, they, it shoots a beanbag.
Oh, okay.
So if we're at a, a safe distance where if we didn't have that, we'd have the result to a firearm, that will shoot a beanbag, and obviously the beanbag will, will stun and then allow us to, to approach safely. Those are extremely, they're $5, so when they, when they, when the, when the officers and as well as myself qualify on that, every beanbag is $5, so training for that, the expense is expensive, but you, I never want to not have a less lethal option, you know, because of the amount of a beanbag.
Anything new on the, what I'm going to call the changling less leathery ropes?
No, I, I, you know, I, I didn't put that in there, and I actually went to a demonstration, and it's something that I am definitely interested in, it's just that you can only have so much if we could put in a car, but I think what I'll do is, in, I'll, I'll seek a grant for that. When the next grant under the Department of Justice, Edward Byrne Grant, which I got a lot of equipment last time I got the tasers from, that's probably where I'll try to solicit those funds for, but it's something, it's another option, but I, I did not put it in here. Equipment maintenance, so our contract, now this changed, so when I submitted my, my budget, so the CAD is basically, that's our logging system, that's where we do our reports, that's our dispatch records, that costed, the contract last year was 13,315, that has since changed, they increased it, I got a notice in February at a 5% increase. I have those numbers for you right after this, I'll show you the, what, what, where there's, where I, we can reduce my budget by, I think, about $8,000 based on that officer's, that changed rank, that saved money as well as, but then I included the increase of that, and it's still about 8, $8,500, I think, I, I have a precise number for you.
Is that a three-year contract?
I'm sorry?
So you actually have a contract for that software?
Yeah, every year we, we sign, we have a contract with them, yes, every year. That's our new lease payment for our copiers. Radio councils, that's based on 50, year 23, and that's our, our maintenance contract with Goostown, who has provided an excellent service, especially considering our repeater up in a mountain that often goes down, they have to go up there, so that's actually, I find that to be very reasonable. Our generator maintenance is 1,300, that was reduced because other departments used the same company, so it was 1,500, they reduced it to 200 once, I think, the water department signed on, I think they did, right? And you did, you did, well?
The town hall is now on that contract.
Yes, so it lowered it.
We only have two though, right?
No, actually, yeah, yeah, the highway department was talking about adding it earlier also, so.
Well, we went today to Hadley for the tour of the Fire Public Safety Complex, they talked a lot about the generator contract, make sure that you have a shared expense on there. So it sounds like that?
We did do that, yeah, that was actually part of the cost efficiencies, that was one of the rewards from reviewing that.
There's something that's to my?
Plus the copier, right?
Yeah, it's been a slow process though, I must say. I take full responsibility.
That low-hanging fruit that you referred to, we grabbed that one. And that's the equipment you were referring to earlier, the all-traffic equipment contract, and that was based on the two?
Two signs, right?
Message signs that we have, as well as our two radar signs. And it'll provide us with traffic data, the radar signs provide us with traffic data, and those message boards obviously are accessed remotely. And then there's a taser subscription plan, which is $2,400, and that's based on fiscal year 23, and that's where that number came up. But other than that, I think that includes my entire budget explanation.
Very thorough.
So I saw on the material that was submitted to us last week, that regional lockup assessment was zeroed out.
Yes, it's no longer required, it's going to stay that way, yes. I hope so, they haven't made, they haven't made any other indication.
So maybe if you're done, we'll have just Bradley put up the one that you've got from, whichever one, the, your most recent one maybe? We've got the ninth, I think, we've got our?
Yeah, where is that?
Oh, I can find it, now, all these things are so small. Because that minimized, uh?
Is it right there?
That one?
Yeah.
Just to sort of see the big picture here?
Yeah, yes, I do, okay.
So any officers that have been assigned to the schools, that doesn't show up separately anywhere, correct?
No, and we don't have any officers assigned to the school, we had an officer that was working at Hampshire Regional as a school resource officer, but I don't know if that funding was cut short or not, but he's, he's not up there anymore.
It was cut.
It was, yeah. And what, it was a reimbursement, I, so I pay him overtime and then the school reimburses me.
I think there is an interest in being able to have some presence at Norris.
You know, the officer that we have, he, he has an assignment, he's the school liaison, he's not labeled a school resource officer, he's our school liaison, and Eliza Pluta, he was the officer that did the vulnerability assessment and everything, so he's in very close relations with Eliza and the, and the administrative staff over there, he's also the DARE officer. So he is connected in that sense.
Even though it's not, I mean, the PTO I think was, somebody contacted me, it was very interesting, maintaining that relationship with the police, and I think the PTO had been funding that, well, the DARE I know is an evidence-based program, so that was an issue, but nonetheless, they were hoping that maybe the cannabis funds could be used towards maintaining a relationship between the kids and the police.
Sure.
But it's not anywhere that shows up in your budget?
Yep.
So just scroll down on the total there.
Total would be everything.
So 1,009, okay, so we're? That's for 22, okay, and so 24, 20, yeah, I guess, yeah, we're just, we're a day or two behind in terms of what all you've updated, I guess then, in terms of what I have on my screen then?
That separated out with, what I have, it is not separated out with?
Dispatch.
With Fire.
Yeah.
Okay, so?
Fire has a separate?
No, it's all in?
It's under Public Safety.
But I, where is dispatch in this, is that a separate work area, or is that right up in there?
Right on, communication wages is right on the DARE.
Communication wages, okay, so again, I think, yeah, that's where that is, okay. And then, so one thing that I see there is the heading, even though it doesn't have any money in it, we had been talking at one point about an admin expense, possibly sharing an admin between Fire and Police, but at this point in time, there's an admin aid, we've got a request in on your wish list, right?
Yes, yeah, yes, I, I didn't, but that was not for admin aid. If you want to adjust that, that for future reference, I can give you the numbers that I, I made reference to the, to the 0.7% decrease in my budget request. It's not a lot, but it's something, and that's based on that, I can tell you exactly where, where you can make those changes, Bradley, if you'd like to make those. So for equipment maintenance, with that 5% increase, that new request would be 31,528.76.
31,500, what was that again? And we could put that, equipment maintenance in both wishlist?
Uh, no, the equipment, that wouldn't be a wishlist, equipment wouldn't be a wishlist, that's?
Just budget one, equipment maintenance?
Yes, yes, that would be the increase that I would need, and this is where the, the reduction?
Let me update the numbers tomorrow morning.
Okay, sure.
Might be easier.
All right.
So that's the figures that we have, Bradley, so is that? That's the page for the police, right?
Yes, this is the police.
Okay.
Just for sake of discussion, that I, I told you what they were, wages would be reduced by $8,500, and ed, education incentive would be reduced by about $1,300.
So would the desire still to be, to try and get some sort of an administrative assistant?
That wishlist was not for an administrative assistant, that, because I'm, I, I see the trend of part-time, part-time hours being less and less, that was for the, an additional full-time police officer, and the $30,000 would be because, that would be what it would take, if I had that officer, that, that would allow me to reduce for the other $17,000, I could take that out of part-time wages and overtime wages to make, to, to cover a salary of a full-time police officer with the $30,000, because we wouldn't have to have, because having that officer and the way I could put him, that officer on the shift would, would allow for a, a reduction overtime in, in vacation coverage, sick coverage, and personal day coverage, as well as the weekend, any open shifts on the weekend. That was the wishlist, so that $30,000 is for, was not for a administrative assistant, it was for?
And that would still be worth it with benefits and all?
I didn't, I didn't factor in benefits, just, just salary.
No, I don't ever think about the benefits.
Another, another budget.
agenda now you're responsible for, yes.
Right, right, no, that's true. But I, you know, I mean, over, overtime and different meetings and different discussions, there's been an idea of trying to share somebody, you know, between?
Yes.
Fire, in terms of doing some of the basic admin stuff that takes somebody else's time, that could be better spent.
So that, that request is because I'm trying to softly adjust to lack of part-time officers in the future, and if I do it gradually like this, I think it'll be an easier, an easier adjustment financially.
Ever thought of putting in for one of the, I think it's a DOJ Jay Manning grants, where basically they'll pay 100% the first year, then 80, 60, 40, 20, till the, finally the responsibility is on the town, might be a great way to go about that.
I absolutely, I believe there is one in the process, I think it actually was posted recently, and in order to do that, I would just need the, the approval of, of the board.
That came up today in Hadley also, that's what they're, that's what they're doing.
There they are. They're a captive audience right now.
I mean, that's a lot, they, I mean, with Hadley today, they talked about a million, a million dollars, really?
Doesn't the approval of the select board require the select board to guarantee the funding be there as it de-escalates over the next five years, so?
I don't, I, I have not read the, the requirements of the grant yet, I, it was posted recently, I haven't gotten to it.
What's the, what's the name of the grant, it's called, is it Starter or?
In the past, I, I don't remember specifically, in the past it was called the COPS FAST Grant, that, that, in fact, that's what I was hired. When I, when I was hired 30 years ago, or 29 years ago, it was a COPS FAST Grant that I was hired on.
Because there's a similar thing in the, the Fire.
Correct, yeah, okay.
Because the chief in Hadley was literally applying for it today, upwards of a million dollars. Very interesting. Yeah. Okay, all right, good. How about other questions, anybody? Anything off there?
What that does sound like, given the circumstances of sort of gradually? What that does sound like, given the circumstances of sort of gradually accommodating the reduction in part-time, that sounds like a very good option.
It's a great option to have very little cost in the beginning and gradually get there.
And, you know, that same spirit of the $30,000 request, I realize that $57,000 or $60,000 is a lot more than $30,000. I could compensate accordingly.
Well, I think you did a great job, especially given the year that you had last year, to try to, you know, come up with figures that make sense. You've done a great job.
Thank you. And if, I, I recognize that the budget has to be approved very soon, and possibly those discussions during the school break, that vacation period, I have a planned vacation that week. So if there's any discussions, if it's possible to include me in if, prior to, you know, if that's the case, you know, because I won't be available that week.
Great. No, this has been very helpful. I agree. Very detailed presentation and a lot of good information, as usual, so thank you for that. Much appreciated. Good. So with that, how about, are we, while we're still in the budget mode here, I think we should try to have a joint meeting, if we can, with finance next Thursday? And what would be the departments that people would like to have? I'm going to sort of assume.
The school at some point, but.
Assume fire?
And fire.
And school, I mean, Norris.
You want to bring in the school committee for the school?
I don't know, what do we, what do we need? We've got, we've got the budget both from Norris and Hampshire Regional. But do we want the superintendent? Do we want the principal?
Well, I would push back. I would say the school committee took its vote if you wanted to discuss the budgets with the school committee. I can contact the chair of Hampshire Regional if we want to do it all together as one. I just warn you, that means it's 24 school committee members.
Yeah, no.
No, I think if the school committees have already voted, it would be, yeah, it would be good to just, maybe just have the chairs.
Have a nice weekend, everybody.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Ed.
Is it possible to have the chairs?
I think that's fine, yeah.
They have a finance committee up at Regional, right?
chaired by the chair of the school committee.
Oh, okay. All right, one more to say. Okay, so who do we, who do we want?
Margaret.
Fire and, she's out of, Joan, do you think she's here? Margaret? Isn't she out of?
Who? No, it's Kim Schott.
Yeah.
If I'm saying that right. A Southampton resident.
Right, so this Southampton chair and?
She's the chair of Hampshire Regional.
Okay.
I chair Norris.
And the principal, shall we?
We could bring them, both of them.
And the business.
Well, I mean.
Well, I guess I would, I would, again, if I put my school committee hat on, I would push back and say, we've gone through that process, the committee took its vote, so if there's pushback or feedback, it's at the committee level, and then who, for their support staff, they want to engage.
Except that, I mean, her, she's accounted for things very differently than we've done in the past. And that would be the only reason, because there's a lot more transparency and clarity about the expenses, that's all.
Yeah, I don't disagree with that.
I also think it is such a huge percentage of the budget, and I think that I'm always reminded that this is also for the public. And if it's going to be with finance too, I don't know how many finance committee members have, you know, heard, I think, you know, all the better to get support from finance select board going into town meeting.
True, true, but we heard the town administrator last year, and we pushed to get our budget done in advance of our deadline. And we held our public meetings, and they were open to everybody to attend. And those from the public, now, to your point, there was nobody from our finance committee that attended.
Do we know that they're, they're available? If we schedule this meeting, should we check with them about the appropriate dates so we get someone here?
I think Thursdays, we've said ourselves, we have our Tuesday meetings for select board.
Okay.
I've said from a couple of meetings ago that we wanted to keep Thursdays open for joint meetings with FinCom. So to the extent that they.
Have we communicated that to them?
I guess I was assuming between the liaison or the town administrator that it happened. I have not, no, directly. So that's the thing that fell through the cracks tonight, obviously. But let's say fire, and then, so the chairs of the school committee and the two principals. And if they decide to bring anybody else, that's fine. It's up to them. Now, we will have other departments, so we've got, eventually, what are the other departments that we want to hear from? We'll have, on our presentation on Tuesday night, we'll have both the library director and the COA director will be up doing their quarterly report. So my thinking is that if we've got some budget questions for them, we could kind of do those at the same time while they're already here. Does that make sense? So then we probably need one, certainly for town administrators' overall budget, for town hall, essentially. A separate, a separate one. So if we do school and fire, that probably takes up Thursday night, right?
And board of health and assessors.
Right, and those could be board of health, assessors, and town hall.
Yeah.
Budget could be that. The next one out. So if we were to schedule, the 23rd would be the fire and school, I'm sorry, yes, 23rd fire and school, and the 30th, town hall, and assessors, board of health. How's that work? That covers just about everybody, I think?
And then library and.
Well, I'm sort of lumping in.
COA next Tuesday.
Town hall, however you want to handle that, I don't know. Yeah, so if we deal with COA and library on Tuesday, the 17th, they know that they're, oh, sorry, God, wrong dates. Tuesday, the 21st, they're coming in anyway to do their reports, and so to the extent we've got their budget information, they've submitted their narratives in the thing that, we have one for Bradley, but we'll get the updated version from him.
Now, Ed, do you want to notify both of those people, Joanna and Joan, that they should come prepared to answer any budget questions?
They already have been for the canceled meeting.
Okay, so they're aware of that, okay.
So that sounds like, like a plan on the 30th and for that, for the other ones up there, so the 23rd, 30th.
Is six o'clock good for people, or later?
Yeah, I don't know, is six o'clock okay?
Thursday.
Tuesday or Thursday?
Thursdays.
I'll make it if I can.
I'm going to be a little late, not this coming, next Thursday, but the 30th.
Okay.
But I will, I will be here. I'll just be late.
All right, good. So that takes care of some scheduling.
Could I ask one other question? When's the deadline for articles for the warrant?
April 6th.
April 6th, okay.
So just from my own point of information, I realize, you know, after tonight, this budget's still being built. When, when will the budget stop being built? And only changes to the budget will happen through these meetings? And I realize you need time to work on this, so.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Chris, by next Thursday, will we have a final version that we're all on the same sheet of music? And only changes to the budget will happen during the public sessions? Or is that too much to ask for?
Because have we plugged in the final, the new request for the fire? I mean, last meeting, we thought they had under-requested. And so we've got new.
I still think they have under-requested.
You're still waiting for some numbers from assessors also?
On the revenue side.
Yeah, okay. Okay. So let's, let's see if we can, certainly before we meet on next Thursday. You know, I mean, it may not be totally crucial for our meetings with, with library and COA, but certainly in terms of the fire presentation on Thursday, we need to have as realistic a budget as he's going to request.
Right, yeah, so can we get an updated thing once chief sends you?
Right. So just, you know, in the email that you sent around, just let us know if there's some change from something before what we're looking at, so we're all.
I plan on sending all the files to the finance committee, because I haven't done that. So that might be holding them up on why they're not organizing any meetings.
And then, it may have been covered while I was up at PPP, but was there any update on the non-union personnel wage? That'll be next week. Next week, okay.
Okay.
My work in person went away to school this week.
Yeah.
That's okay.
Are we going to deal with the whole benefit side when we talk about general government?
You all keep throwing out different terms in town hall, general government, timeline, or employee benefits? Yes, benefits would be under employee benefits, which I would, I would, at this point, assume would be under what Chris had referred to as town hall.
Yeah. Sorry about that. Different vocabulary, okay. All right, does anybody have any other business that can't wait? I have one thing, if I may. As we were here, was it a week ago, 10 days ago now, probably? For the meeting where we had folks come in in open time about the Maple Street fire, we talked about kind of what next, in a way. Ed came up with an idea and brought it to my attention and wanted to see if this would make some sense. And I felt it did, so I've given him the go-ahead to pursue this idea without, you know, further delay, just so time is passing on this. And basically to try and get information from each of the departments that might have been on site. So obviously, fire, highway, police, that were, that had personnel on site that night. So either if the heads of the department themselves were there, or their staff. But basically, in the guise of trying to just get a, a report of the events of the night from the three different key departments that were there, to have them each provide a statement to, in writing to Ed, from their perspective about what happened that night, or what they were told about what was happening that night, the information that they were provided, so that we can start to understand those things before memories fade away too much. And I think the idea here is with the guise of looking forward, trying to figure out how we can try and plan and think about this for the future to avoid such horrendous, you know, event, especially with any kind of growth in town, with our limited water sources in general. You know, what is this maybe going to need us to think about doing for future planning, expansion of anything in town? And so the idea is basically to collect information while it's still fresh in people's minds and get that back to Ed before the end of the month, and then, then see where we go from there. But that's at least a step to gather information from our three key departments that had involvement that night on site.
I think, I think one issue might be that two out of three of these departments are union employees, and there may be some restrictions in terms of for what purpose we'll be using them, hopefully not disciplinarian. Like, I think that we have to take those into consideration.
It's not that, it's simply to gather.
I know it's not, but the unions will protect that information. So I think it's a good idea, though, but I think that might be a barrier.
Yeah, I think we're, you know, we're just trying to look for statements from the heads of those departments and getting those statements from their staff that were on site that night without, you know, again, and the intent is looking forward, not, not to try and point fingers about what happened and what didn't happen, and what could have happened and shouldn't have happened, but really trying to say, okay, I think we heard from the folks that were in the audience that they're, you know, they want to plan. They want to know, I mean, what is our, our thinking going forward in terms of people that live, you know, way out without hydrant facilities, et cetera? And what do we, how do we work that through? And so this, I think, is a first step to trying to gather that information and figure out how we can move forward after that.
I would push again, I think now is the time to do an independent review. Outside consultant, come in, evaluate our fire department, ambulance, with that exact, where are we going 10 years? How should we structure our department now? We could point to this as an example of, you know, again, it's an outsider's point of view doing it. I think the clock is ticking, now's the time to do this as part of the bigger project.
No, I, I don't disagree with that, and I think we brought that up, or you brought that up at our last meeting, last whatever Tuesday night that was. And we'll, we'll bring it back up around, I'm sure, to discuss on this coming Tuesday, just say, okay, do we agree with this? I mean, I think in general, that was a new idea, but I didn't hear a whole lot of people disagreeing with the notion of, you know, trying to do that.
One of my difficulties in when sitting through the fire department budget is what I think we're going to see is numbers up there, and, but there's no substance behind them. There's no, I, I personally want to see a 20, 30-page report that backs up all those numbers, because I truly think, based on previous vote of this board, that we're heading back to the public to ask for more money for the, for the ambulance department, and we're going to need something more than a spreadsheet and a department head giving it. We're going to need substance for the voters.
I think it's even bigger than that, and I watched both the select board meetings from last week when I was away, and I totally support doing an assessment of the fire department. But it's even bigger than that, because if we're going to say that we, as a select board, recommend based on results, like, are we going to say, like, are we going to map out where there isn't public water? Are we going to map out where there aren't hydrants? So are we going to say that we're going to recommend to the planning board that any new developer should have cisterns or something? Like, I think we have to look at fire service and ambulance service for the town, and that will cross over not just in fire, but planning, highway.
Overall.
It will identify the vulnerabilities, and then that'll bring in the other departments that need to weigh in.
No, I think it will.
Right, I totally support that.
So I think that's, that's the, that's the sort of general thinking about trying to move forward in terms of a bigger plan. But hearing what you're saying, I'm, sorry, go ahead.
No, that's exactly what people want.
Yeah. But I think, you know, are you, are you thinking that you can get somebody to agree to do this kind of assessment? This, you were mentioning somebody from Maholuk, I think.
I haven't spoke to anybody or called anybody, because that was outside the scope of authority given to me by the committee.
Correct. But is, is that something that you're hoping that could get done before a month's time? Is that?
That would have to be bid if it's more than $10,000, right?
Well, my, my initial thought was if we, if we identified somebody that could come in as the acting chief, and then 30 days with the outgoing chief, they work together.
Sure.
Then he continues on and performs this service in that capacity, probably in a part-time capacity, not full, which would then free up wages of that line item.
And then carry out that assessment at that time, right?
Right, within a three-month window.
Okay, yeah, no, I'm not disagreeing. I thought you were trying to suggest that there would be the assessment before we had town meeting, which I don't see how we can do that. So I hear what you're saying about.
Because it might, again, in my thought, if we were moving forward with that, and that was going forward, then I'd probably, I would be more in favor of supporting some sort of placeholder budget that the, that the fire chief put forward, and that the town administrator feels reasonably comfortable with. And then get us through the next 90 days to get, after the vote, to get through the assessment, and then we reevaluate.
Yeah, because there's no sense putting out, putting a plan together and not being able to support it.
Yeah.
Understand it.
Yeah, and there definitely has to be some level of budgeting in, in this current budget. So, you know, I hear what you're saying about maybe not having enough solid information behind it to really justify it, perhaps, but there's got to be, you know, something going forward as we put a budget together. So whether there's still some tweaking to do between now and next Tuesday until you get something that is livable as a realistic fire department, you know?
We just can't have a drop in fire or ambulance service. I mean, that's my worry. Just having gone to another one, hearing some stories about, you know, our response rate used to be this, and now it's this. I mean, we just can't sacrifice the quality of the service.
So, well, this, this part wasn't totally on the agenda for this meeting. Do we have it on the agenda for next meeting to talk about the fire chief?
Oh, here's the agenda right here.
Recruitment, I think we did, didn't we?
I didn't see it.
So we'll bring it up again on Tuesday, or no? Is it on there? Hang on.
COA, just fire chief, search committee charge, no, bylaws.
Yeah, fire chief, search committee charge. So that's, that's kind of where that would fit. So let's, I guess, come back and have a real position on that on Tuesday, is that okay?
Yeah, do you, yeah, I'll talk to you afterwards.
Yeah, okay. Does that sound reasonable? Okay, so anyway, so say that right now, then, this is, this is the immediate plan before, before memories fade, and, you know, we just want to get it down on paper in terms of what, what was happening from people's perspective who were actually on site that night, with a view to kind of gathering information as sort of a study to help us move forward with some future planning that's including fire, but obviously bigger than that, as you were talking about, whether it's zoning, whether it's, you know, all sorts of things that might happen, okay? All right, is that okay? So Ed, you've notified each of the department head, these three department heads, to, to do this and get something back to you within the next couple of weeks, is that right?
They've already been notified. I've given them the deadline that I would like the statements back by next Friday, which I believe is the 24th.
24th, yeah, would be, okay, all right. So once we do that, then we'll, we'll pick it up and see where we go from there, okay? All right, anything else? If not, I think I'll take the motion to.
Can I just ask one other question? I'm just noticing, is it a case of inclement weather, there was a Zoom link? Is this going to be the case going forward just because of the budget situation?
I'll let Ed answer that. We've had two meetings now that we've had to redo because of snow events. And we didn't have anything that allowed us to come together within open meeting time.
Yeah, I got some pointers from Michelle Rindazzo at KP Law, and yes, after, and I'm going to say this too, is that this, at least this week's Tuesday's cancellation, more than likely, if we, even if we had a Zoom alternative because of the downed trees and limbs and the power outages, it probably wouldn't have happened.
Would have done it anyway.
But this is, and my intent right now is, on every agenda, whether it's a Tuesday or Thursday agenda, this disclaimer will go on it through mid-April, and it gives us the opportunity to say, that inclement weather comes up, you know, check, check the town website and, you know, if something came up, inclement weather, we're going to post that Zoom information and the meeting will go on via Zoom.
And it can be posted that same day, is what I understand. We don't have to abide by the 48-hour.
Right.
Because it's already on there. Okay.
And the, I'm going to say the opinion was that, okay, if you put the Zoom information up there as an alternative, but it's only for inclement weather, you're going to confuse the public. And they're, even if there's not inclement weather, they're going to be looking for it on Zoom. So this was the way that Michelle suggested we go.
Okay, makes sense.
That's good, thank you.
Any questions?
You're welcome.
If, if town hall is closed, does that, does that prevent us from having a Zoom meeting?
No.
Okay, so our business meeting can still go on even though during the day it was closed, okay?
But the other night, it couldn't have, even if we'd gotten here in person, because town hall was closed the other day. Theoretically, so.
I mean, theoretically, could I have taken that posting off at 4:00 or whatever? But like you and I talked about, once you've closed town hall for that day, is the assumption that, okay, it's closed at night. Okay, now you're trying to get around everything and what are you doing?
Yeah, yeah.
You know, type of thing.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. Okay, how about a motion to adjourn? All right, we are adjourned. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.